Ready? Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order Monday, June 15, 2009. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox?
Present.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson? Mayor Pressing.
I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. So, Joe first. It's been moved.
Second.
Moved by Robert Lewis, second by Brandon Bowersox. Is there any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Any modifications? Seeing none. If anybody would like to speak to the city council, I've got one so far. Please fill out a form and pass it up. Mr. Conklin, you're up then, I guess.
I'm just actually available for next questions when our...
Ah, okay. Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
He's here for items three and four of the new business. Hopefully, we'll be quick. Okay, under old business, anybody else? Anybody else going once? Okay, under old business, we have ordinance number 2009-06-057, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, Illinois. Rezoning of 714 West California Avenue from R2 Single Family to R7 University Residential. This is Plan Case 2106-M09 concerning Kevin and Julia Webster. This has been council committee and then back to council. Is there a motion? Brendan?
Yeah, I'd move to defeat this ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved by Brandon Bowersox, seconded by Diane Marlin, to defeat the ordinance rezoning R2 to R7. Is there discussion? David?
I just wanted to restate the obvious, which is that the neighborhood reaction to this has been unanimously negative and that I think this is a clear case of it's very much not what the neighborhood wants and they came out in force here and in letters to us to remind us of that.
Is there further discussion?
I concur.
Brendan?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. And to me, the variance, or I'm sorry, the zoning change never really met the criteria for a zoning change when you look at the case. So, just based on its face, that piece never made sense. I think the outcome of the rest of the case will be that, you know, the owners could appeal, they could decide to turn it into a duplex, or all of those other venues about the use. But I think it's been a clear case from the beginning that this zoning change just doesn't meet our criteria and is not warranted.
And I would add, for the record, that in addition to not meeting various criteria, it also runs against the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, which I think is an important point to add. Diane?
I concur with everything that's been said. Spot zoning is bad policy, and I would also note that the Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend denial of this petition as well.
Further discussion? Okay, so, this is a vote to deny the rezoning, so that sets it up. A yes vote is denial, yes. Okay. Any further? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
The zoning change is denied. Reports of standing committees, Committee of the Whole. Oh, that's interesting.
That was you.
That was me, wasn't it? Brandon, could you take these, please?
Yeah, do you want me to chair, or do you want me to make? I could make the motions for each that we sent from committee. It's up to you.
Why don't you chair and I'll make the motions?
Gladly, okay. So, we have a report from the Committee of the Whole that met last Monday, June 8th, and Charlie Smythe was the chair. Take it away, Charlie. Tell us what the committee sent.
Okay. The first item up is social service funding, the allocations. We have Kelly and David Garrick. David sent around another spreadsheet a few days ago, so I trust everybody got those. Okay. Kelly, is there anything else to add?
Other than, once this is, you know, voted on the way it is, I guess, you know, having direction to place them under the different pots of money would be one. And then, I had another question, comment, and I can't remember what it was. I should've wrote it down.
Well, we'll give you a moment to think about it. I guess the appropriate thing would be a motion to approve the spreadsheet as proposed by David, with the proviso that the monies be allocated according to the three funding sources.
I remember what the second comment or question was. Would council like to know where everybody was placed? Or, I know for transparency, we had sent this out. Do I need to send another stating this is where the money, which pot of money everybody were getting funded under? You know, how do you want to handle that?
David?
I'd like to see, because we haven't thrown enough spreadsheets around yet. I would like to see a final version that includes the allocation among the three different funds, just to have that part of the record.
Yeah, and that could be three additional columns to the spreadsheet, the existing spreadsheet.
That's it. It's a big state, there's plenty of room.
Well, also, what I have done is a sheet that has the amount, and then, at the top it would say CDBG Township or City, and then have list, and then like the total, and not have like the ward. I mean, it would be smaller, you know, smaller spreadsheet.
David?
Yeah, I don't think we need the word written down at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Oh, sorry.
You could, yeah, as the chair, you could make the motion, actually.
Well, it came to council without a motion, because you were going to prepare the spreadsheet, so I was going to let David make a motion here.
Well, I move that we allocate the social services funding in accordance with the spreadsheet that I have mailed to all of you. In the interest of transparency, I'll note that the final allocations do match the one that was publicly distributed last week, and that we will have another version of the spread, final version of the spreadsheet showing that the allocation between the various funding sources. So, I move approval of the social service funding allocations as divided up into funds.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, seconded by Robert. Any other discussion? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Diane, go ahead.
Just wanted to repeat what we discussed last week, and that is, before the next round of allocations takes place, we'll get together and come up with some guidelines and some, maybe a little bit clearer procedure for how these funds are allocated, particularly in light of the increasing need and disaster at the state budget level.
Yep, Charlie? Go ahead. Charlie first, and then David.
Okay, well, I was trying to, I went back to the spreadsheet that, with the corrections that David added earlier this week, tried to make some sense out of how we did the allocations. So, I added a percent served column, went back and got the numbers as best I could. They're not perfect, I probably should've run it by Kelly, but didn't get a chance to look at it till very late today. And, on average, those programs that are new are substantially, or almost, you know, entirely Urbana-based, or serve Urbana residents, that's what we'd be expecting. In fact, the average is 83 percent. For those where an increase was given, the average is 58 percent, and where there's a decrease in, on average, it's 36 percent. So, it looks like the, you know, the averages point to a priority given to Urbana residents, which is probably appropriate and a good thing, and I support that. However, if you look at the individual numbers, you'll see that an agency that provides 50 percent support, in one case gets an increase, and in another situation where an agency provides 50 percent increase, 50 percent support, gets a big decrease. And it makes absolutely no sense. And so, I still prefer the version of the spreadsheet that I proposed and sent to you last week, which gives, which maintains agencies as they have been in the past with some small adjustments, provides substantial increases for many others, and in fact, in the revised version that I would have proposed had I received a more receptive audience last week, it would have actually cut one agency, one agency completely on the grounds that they're actually based in Champaign, their tax, they collect sales tax that goes to Champaign, and it's not clear to me that the small amount of money we're giving would actually get their program as proposed off the ground, which has been an important criteria in the past. So, though I support social service funding in principle, I'm probably going to vote present tonight as opposed to in favor of this. Thank you.
David, and then Robert. David, you had your hand up?
Yes.
No? Okay. Robert?
Well, a couple of things, I think, in the equation that Mr. Smythe worked on, I think, there's a couple of things that goes back in the history of social service funding that I think is difficult to quantify, and that is, we had talked about how will you address the onslaught of increasing numbers of agencies as they progress. One of the discussions we had, not only in, on the council, but was on, in community development, was the capacity building of individual grantees. And to quantify that is very difficult, but I think, in the back of our minds, we do think of that as we see new candidates come forward. And, obviously, the numerical values would not really come out as Mr. Smythe would like them to come out. As you can see, it moves towards support for Urbana residents, but on the other hand, it also wants to look at organizations that can build capacity and start being independent on their own, that would afford us the opportunity to take on additional incomering persons that want to get in the mix. And the other abstraction to that equation would be the dealing with the consolidation of like organizations that we don't have redundancy in, and we have to look closely at that. So, that equation that we're talking about having, and the conversation we're having after these allocations are given, I would not want to get into that conversation now, because it's going to take a long time if I jump into the mix with that. And that equation's going to be a very complex series of equations to try and come up with some reasonable understanding of how we deal with those allocations. So, I appreciate the look, but it also, not only gives you additional questions to ask at this point, but also the principles by which we have to address them, it also brings up those questions, and that's a multiplicity of questions that we need to address. So, I wouldn't want to muddy, not saying it's going to muddy the waters now, and I appreciate all the efforts that's going forward, but I think we need to take that time to really go through the mental processes down the road. And he went through the mental process, so he's got a firsthand shot at it, and he's going to give us a new look. We have some newer looks, and I think that collective body can put together a decent formula that will make sense in the future. But I think that process is going to take a lot longer than one would imagine. That's enough I want to say about it.
Any other comments before we take a vote? Charlie?
Well, I agree with what Robert, with what you're saying, Robert. It's just that, the way, you know, I'm looking at the numbers, and I don't see that in the patterns. You know, that's the issue here. If I saw the, you know, on average, it's what, you know, what should be. Urbana residents get higher priority. But the way the allocations have worked out, I don't see that in the individual percentages, you know, where somebody who represents 10 percent gets a very large increase, and somebody else who gets 50, represents 50 percent gets a big decrease, you know, that kind of thing that's going on. And I know these agencies, and I just don't think that these agencies deserve the cuts that I'm seeing here. Let me just put it that way. So, and like I said, my proposal was an attempt to have our cake and eat it too, in that it supports most of all of the new programs, almost at the same levels, not quite. And, so, I'll shut up.
Yeah, I, my final comment is that I, it all comes back to what Diane said for me. I mean, I think the numbers, to me, aren't quite perfect. There's some discrepancies, like organizations that have been getting funded steady for years and doing a good job, that we're somewhat cutting this year. But it all comes back to the fact that I think it's too late to change the rules, you know, at the 11th hour, and it'll be really valuable to have a conversation in advance of next year's grant cycle about our criteria as a group and our process for the allocations, so that throughout the process, we feel like it's been consistent, we know what we're asking for. And I even got an offer of support, someone from Do Good Consulting was willing to come in and like even give a bit of a guest lecture as we start this process to just talk about what are the metrics that they recommended we should be looking at in assessing a not-for-profit's health and capacity, and how we can make sure our, you know, our selection process gets at the metrics that we've identified to get to the goals that we've together chosen. So, I look forward to that kind of process. With no other comments, then, this is just a motion, so would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that carries. Next, we have a resolution from committee. Charlie?
Okay. Resolution 2009-06-022R, resolution adopting identity theft prevention program for the committee. I so move.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded by Diane. Any discussion about the resolution? Hearing none, would all those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the resolution carries. Charlie, next, we had an ordinance...
Ordinance number 2009-06-063, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23, 183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets. This is Rainbow View and Stoughton. For the committee, I so move.
Okay, seconded by Robert. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Next, Charlie?
Ordinance number 2009-06-065, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Robert. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Charlie?
Ordinance number 2009-06-061, ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with Baku and Patel at 108 West University Avenue. For the committee, I so move.
Seconded by David. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes. Oh, and I missed the omnibus part here. I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Ordinance number 2009-06-064, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for site improvements at 108 West University Avenue, and this is also the Baku and Patel's case. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Robert. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, yeah.
Good question here. Phyllis, does this, is five votes sufficient on this one, given?
It's a budget.
It's a budget amendment, so, okay.
Okay. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Charlie?
Ordinance number 2009-06-062, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement for promotion and marketing services with the Urbana Business Association for fiscal year 2009, 2010. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Okay, that was the end of the report from committee, so I'll hand the chair back to Charlie Smythe.
Okay, do we have any reports from special committees? I know that Lisa Carter has an update for us, and she should get comfortable there while she's at it, too. She's got three of these next ones.
I just wanted to make a quick announcement. I know this was emailed to council members, but on June 30th, we'll be having a public meeting from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Illinois Terminal on the fourth floor concerning the University Avenue Corridor Study. If you can recall, the city received an Illinois Tomorrow grant to complete that corridor study from State Street in Champaign to Maple Street in Urbana. It's a combined effort between the City of Urbana, City of Champaign, the University of Illinois, MTD, and then Champaign Regional Plan Commission. They had our first public hearing in November. Champaign Regional Plan Commission is contracted with the city to complete the corridor study, and they've been working since then to come up with some different development scenarios and streetscape with the consultant CBA for University Avenue. They will be presenting those on boards and illustrations at this June 30th meeting, kind of as an open house for public input, and then they'll go back and take any input they receive, and then prepare the final plan for review by the Plan Commission and ultimately, city council. We just wanted to let you aware of those.
Okay, so, June 30th. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Resolution number 2009-06-023R, a resolution for improvement by the municipality under Illinois Highway Code for Green Street.
We brought this quickly to the city council due to the I.D.A.T. requirements for passing resolutions for, our plans are under review and there are offices where they needed a signed resolution before they could approve them, so we kind of rushed this through to get this project out on the street, enter construction. This is Green Street from Vine to Cottage Grove, reconstruction by milling and resurfacing, all the curb and gutter, driveway pavements, and sidewalks on the north side, and repairing the brick sidewalks on the south side. Estimated cost was $875,000, of which $750,000 will come from motorfield tax and the other 125 from Community Development Block Grant, our funds, which is part of the Recovery Act. So, we were looking for approval.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'd move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Brendan, seconded by Robert Lewis. I know, speaking for Robert, or for Dennis Roberts, I know he was absolutely thrilled about this getting done, so, thank you, Joe. Any other comments? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? All right, I guess, just, this is, I just need a roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And motion carries. Thanks. And Lisa has the next three cases, I believe. Next up is ordinance number 2009-06-066, an ordinance approving the second extension of final plat approval for Wisely Inn, the Super 8 Motel, first subdivision, Plan Case number 2069-S08. All yours, Lisa.
Sure, the original plat was approved in June of 2008. This is for a two-lot subdivision, the Super 8 Motel, that's just south of Interstate 74. They're proposing to split that lot in two to build another motel. You did extend the approval for 180 days in November of 2008. Essentially, one of the required improvements was storm drainage to improve the storm detention basin for Super 8 to handle the storm water for this new hotel, and then they have basically a storm sewer from that hotel to the new, or the storm basin, detention basin, to handle their storm water. Essentially, they found that the cost to do that was too high, so they redesigned the hotel so that they can have onsite detention on their own lot to help cut down on those improvement costs. Essentially, they have redesigned the hotel, but they still need to go through plan review process, construct the hotel, and all the improvements. So, they're asking for an extension so that they can do that. They have indicated that they're still anticipating to build it this year. Staff recommends approval of a 12-month or 365-day extension to that approval to allow for construction of the hotel.
Questions for Lisa. Brendan?
I just wanted to make sure, we had not voted yet on the bike parking requirement exemption that they asked for, right? That would come later on? This is just the plat?
Yeah, it's a good, I'm glad that you brought that up, because it was kind of miswritten in their letter. There is, administratively, we can reduce up to a certain percentage, and the way the letter was written, it kind of sounded like they will not provide any bike parking, but they will provide bike parking. They're required by our ordinance to provide seven spaces. They're going to provide four. They're asking for a minimal reduction based on it being a hotel, but they want to provide parking for possible employees and people who might be biking to there. So, that, it will be handled, but it is administrative based on the number they're asking for.
I have a question, too. Since they're looking at onsite detention, I know there's some, you know, there's some new ways of doing some storm water and drainage issues. Have they considered any of the green technologies at all in dealing with storm water?
I have not seen the development plans, so I don't know how they're going to handle that storm water. I don't know.
No.
They haven't officially submitted the plans for review.
Sir? Do you want to grab a seat here? If you could just tell us your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Eric Clancy. I'm with Burns &amp; Clancy.
Of course.
Address is 405 East Main, Urbana. The storm water detention will be handled in the normal fashion, which is a grass pond onsite to the west of the site, west of the new building.
Right, okay. Okay, so, I was just going to say is that, just got back from Portland, they were doing some very interesting things with storm water sort of detention as it gets to and moves into various stages.
At least they stated the site's real small, and they had to redesign from a two-story, 72-unit to a three-story, 72-unit, in order for us to put the storm water onsite, so we don't have a lot of room between the parking requirements, the building, storm water detention, and the area that we're working with.
Yeah, one of the things maybe in the future is we can trade some parking for green tech, you know, green.
Be glad to.
Green, well, you know, that might be something you could discuss with the zoning administrator currently, you know, it's an idea, and I don't know how engineering feels about it, but if there's time to talk about it, please do.
Yeah, so, we'd be glad to trade you out. Not a problem.
Okay. Well, thanks, Mr. Clancy. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by David, seconded by Robert Lewis. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is a pair of ordinances. Ordinance number 2009-06-067 and 068, ordinance approving a major variance increase in maximum allowable floor area ratio from .90 to 1.07 in the R5 medium-high-density multiple-family residential zoning district. This is at 805 West Green slash 303 South Bucie Avenue, and it also involves a minimal allowable open space requirement from .3 to .19 in the same zoning case. Lisa?
Sure, the variances are being requested to allow for the enclosure of the 84 balconies. Currently, these are at the Bucie Court Department Complex. The units were built in 1981, and if you had a chance to look at the application material, Exhibit E and D kind of give you photographs, and they are enclosed by walls on both sides, and then they are screened in. One of the things that was noted by the applicant in our CBA meeting, that the balconies have been enclosed since they were constructed in 1981, so it's not something that was done after it was built. Essentially, there are currently no closets in the bedrooms. In closing, the balconies will incorporate the area into the bedroom to allow for closets in the bedrooms, and also a window, and then part of the space will then go into the living area, so that will be incorporated into the living area, and then will have kind of a whole wall of windows. So, that helps with natural light and ventilation, as well as providing closet spaces. As noted by the petitioner, tenant demands have kind of changed since these were built
And if you have any questions, the petitioner, Scott Kunkel is here also, can answer any questions if you need answered, or you'd like to speak.
Is there a motion? An omnibus motion for both would be in order. Brendan?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve both ordinances.
Second.
Been moved by Brendan, seconded by Diane to approve both ordinances. Brendan?
I just wanted to very briefly state why. I think this case is well documented. Thank you, Lisa. The recommendation was, was clear, too. All six variance criteria, to me, are sufficiently met, and this is a very unique case. I think partly unique because we're not effectively decreasing the open space or effectively increasing the floor area. So I, I don't have concerns that this somehow would open the door to every apartment building, being able to gobble up more space above our limits. I think this is very unique. The situation was not created by the petitioner, as you've documented, and, and since it meets our criteria, I support it.
Diane?
Well, I was shocked to read that there were no closets in these apartments, so I think the, the changes that they're making are a significant improvement to the building. They're going to provide a better living space for the tenants and bring a whole lot more natural light into the apartments, so this is, this is an excellent improvement for the people who are going to live in these units.
Scott, a real quick question for you, then. So, you know, better lighting, you know, closets, additional remodeling at all as part of this, or modernizations?
Yeah, actually, we're upgrading all the surfaces in the kitchen. We did new appliances not too long ago, but new coverboards and cabinet fronts. Bathrooms got done not too long ago as well, so this is really kind of the last significant area.
So ongoing, okay.
And it was just one of those things that we were seeing increasingly over the years. With the survey, folks that choose not to work with us for whatever reason, kind of asked them what, you know, what make that decision, and that this was becoming the sort of overwhelming reason was the lack of closets.
Okay. No, thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes. Motion carries. Last up is the annual staff appointments. The mayor provided a list of the twenty-seven annual appointments to various departments. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Diane Marlin, seconded by Robert Lewis. Discussion? Is this a roll call, or just, oh, voice vote? David?
I just wanted to say, on this list, it's a, it's a good bunch of people. There is, I noticed again, one vacancy, which is the administrative officer, and I do hope that that role is filled shortly.
It's my understanding the mayor is talking to someone now, so.
As we speak.
Hopefully, yes. Further discussion?[1688.33]